Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, February twenty second. This city council regular meeting is being held telephonically and virtually in compliance with state executive and legislative actions responding to the COVID nineteen emergency. With that, I'll call the meeting to order, and if Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Coco?
Here.
Councilmember Soltis?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hertahausen? Councilmember Simama?
Here.
Councilmember Porter?
Here.
Mayor Potem Smith?
I'm here.
Mayor Wagner?
I am here.
You have a crime, your honor.
Thank you, Krista. If everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much for that. And with that, we'll move into approval of agenda. Regan, are there any changes tonight?
There are not. Thank you, man.
All right. Thank you. With that, I will look for a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Joan, seconded by Christina to approve the agenda for tonight. Call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye as unanimous to approve the agenda as posted. Next, we will go into public communication and award the two thousand twenty-one youth volunteer, volunteer of the year, Commissioner of the Year, and Presidential volunteers. And with that, I know that Krista had a presentation she was going to put up. And so first, we're going to start with our volunteer of the year. Josh Lyons is our Covington Economic Development Council member. Josh has served on the Chamber Board for many years, as well as serving as its president. He also has been instrumental in getting the Covington Play Unplugged program off the ground and has been integral in its continued success. Josh is also currently serving as the CEDIS co-chair. He has led the mascot steering committee and has presented programs and projects to the council many times. In his positions, he has effectively worked to build a strong local economy and help thousands of children in the community get active during the summer and has increased foot traffic at our local businesses. Josh is a staunch advocate for business in the city and has devoted countless hours to improve Covington's economy. Josh continues to display his commitment to Covington by running a thriving business here and through his countless hours of volunteer service to the community. It's easy to vote for other volunteers that donate hours in other areas as they are more visible. However, there are very few with as many hours and years of service to Covington as Josh Lyons. And Josh, I believe you're here tonight. I wish I was there in person to hand this to you. Are you? There you are. If we move him over, I should have had you move him over first, Krista. My apologies. I know there's always delay. Josh, congratulations on the volunteer of the year. It's an honor and a privilege to hand this to you, give this to you. I wish I was there. We were there in person to shake your hand, and then we always have a reception afterwards where we can sit and talk, but I've known you for quite a long time, and I really appreciate all that you've done for our community. Is there anything you'd like to say, sir?
I always, well, sure, yeah, I always appreciate the opportunity to talk anywhere, really. So I will just say that I'm humbled by the words that were written about me. I thank you for the recognition. Of course, yes, indeed, we both go back in the Covington business community a long way, and I'll say that it's easy to be a part of these things when you're met with at the same level by the city, city leaders. That would include the council and, of course, Regan, where basically we feel like we're really welcomed into the community as business leaders, and I can't say that was necessarily always the case in Covington, but today it really feels like it's a joint effort to make Covington the great city that it really is. So thank you. I appreciate it, and you know, that this award probably buys at least another five, six, seven years of my time. So there you go.
Thank you, Josh, and really, we really appreciate everything you do. So with that, I'll thank you.
Thanks.
And I shake your hand.
All right, and I'll be back to give the CEDIS update later, so.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
All right, Krista, if you want to move our next recipient over, up Sarah's there. So our next award is Commissioner of the Year, and this is for Sarah Parker. She is on our Human Services Commission. Sarah is one of the most dedicated commissioners Covington has. She joined the Human Services Commission during the pandemic in June of two thousand twenty. Sticking through every virtual meeting is definitely a triumph, as she has not ever had the benefit of attending an in-person meeting. Sarah is an active commissioner, as she has attended every meeting, and is an active problem solver for the Human Services Commission. Sarah volunteered for our only outreach event this year by participating in the Storehouse Resource Fair, and she also attended the only site visit the commission had this year at Vine Maple Place. As a policy attorney, Sarah has an extensive legal and environmental background and makes distinct contributions each meeting. This helps to guide and direct the decision the commission makes in an informative and thorough way. Sarah's ability to advocate for those in need from a legal point of view is invaluable to the Human Services Commission. And Sarah, like I said, I wish we were in person to thank your hand and really appreciate everything that you've done coming on board for about a year and a half now, I believe, almost two years that you've been on on the commission. So thank you. And is there anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to say it's hard to follow up on someone who's been so long in the surface to the community. I really felt when I joined, I was hoping to have, there's a few virtual meetings and then start to really get to know my, my fellow commissioners and the staff in the city and council members, but even with remote for going on two years now, I feel I've had such a warm welcome and that I've really gotten to know everybody, and it's been an honor to really make a difference in our community in a time of such need, particularly with the human services. And, and the vision that the community has of growing stronger, even without the pandemic, really called to me. And it's really heartwarming to see that that vision of not only responding to a crisis, but also keeping the long-term vision of well, we need to respond now, but how do we grow and continue to improve? We haven't lost sight of that in our current emergency, and that's been the mindset of my fellow commissioners has been amazing, and I've learned so much from them with their differing backgrounds and points of view. It's again, it's been an honor to serve, and thank you so much.
Sarah, thank you very much for all that you've done, and we really appreciate you volunteering to be on our commission. Thank you. Have a great evening. Yes, round of applause. Sorry. Thank you. Next is our Youth Volunteer of the Year. Liliana Fernandez is on our Arts Commission, and is Lily here tonight? I believe I see her in the audience. So Lily, welcome. And congratulations. Lily has been a youth member of the Arts Commission since two thousand nineteen. She is currently a senior at Holy Names Academy in Seattle. Liliana is passionate about art and being involved in her community. She is constantly engaged in meetings and has eloquently presented information to the city council during their joint meetings with the Arts Commission. Here's Liliana's response when asked, why are you seeking this appointment? She stated that I am seeking this appointment as one of my many experiences that will add to the canvas of my life and paint a beautiful picture of who I will grow up to be. I also feel a strong desire to give back and be more involved in the community. I believe one of the most influential ways to express oneself is through art. For the past two terms, there's been great chemistry within the commission, and I hope to continue the work we've accomplished so far. I can't say anything better than that. I, your response to that question, Liliana, was outstanding, and we are very pleased to have you on the Arts Commission, and we thank you very much for all that you've done. And like I said, I wish I was there. We were all together in person. Shake your hand. And is there anything that you would like to add tonight?
Um, yes, thank you. I am so honored to receive this award, and like more importantly, I am just really happy to be a part of the Arts Commission and be a part of everything that we've accomplished so far as like a member who's been on here ever since twenty nineteen. It's just so amazing to see everything that we've done, and I'm truly so inspired by everyone on the Arts Commission as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and a round of applause also for, congratulations for becoming the two thousand twenty-one Youth Volunteer of the Year. Thank you very much, and again, thank you for all that you've done and for jumping on board, and you have a great evening. And for all of our awards winners, we'll make sure and get you your awards. I know that Julie Johnston will be reaching out to get those to you. And just to let everybody know, the Volunteer of the Year and Commissioner of the Year, those are all nominated and voted on solely by our city staff. And the Presidential Awards, which I'm about to announce, are only given to those that have over a certain number of hours. And so in this case, the adult category needs one hundred or more hours a year to qualify. And first up is Presidential Award is George Pearson, who is our Parks Volunteer. George has earned two hundred and seventy-seven hours of volunteer service, earning him the Silver Presidential Award for two thousand twenty-one. His dedication to our city has been exemplary, and we are delighted to honor him this evening for his servant heart, especially for our parks. Please note that George has previously received the Lifetime Achievement Award of more than four thousand hours of volunteer work. To ensure George receives the recognition he deserves, we continue to recognize his volunteer efforts each year. And I worked a lot with George in the past and for Jenkins Creek Park, and George's passion to see that park survive and thrive is just admirable, and I really, really am honored to give you this award tonight, George. And I just want to say thank you from all of us on the council for everything that you do. And George, is there anything that you'd like to add tonight? Are you here tonight, George?
Okay, I was muted, I think.
Oh, there you go. Hi, George.
Hi. Thanks. Thirteen years ago, when I started this, I thought I was just gonna cut down some blackberry and then go away, but I've been, I stayed at it for thirteen years. This is my thirteenth year, actually. So you're right, that is my passion. I really enjoy being down there. And I enjoy what I do. So that's, that's really all I have to say.
Well, George, thank you, and I'm glad you are a a foundation of, just a rock and a stellar, outstanding citizen in Covington, and appreciate all that you do and all that you stand for. And it's, it's proud to have you here. So thank you, and I wish we were here in person to shake your hand and thank you in person for everything that you do.
Thanks, Jeff.
Have a great evening, George. We do have one more Presidential Award, and it's for Terry and Stephanie Thomas, who were not able to make it tonight. But they are police volunteers. Terry and Stephanie have been police volunteers for many years and are both receiving the Bronze Award for a hundred and sixty-one hours of service in two thousand twenty-one. They're dedicated to our city and have received a Presidential Volunteer Award multiple years in a row. Terry and Stephanie are kind, caring, and very reliable, and their presence has helped police improve public trust with the public. So I want to thank Terry and Stephanie. I really appreciate doing the outreach that you, they do and working with our great police department to help with outreach and working with those individuals in the city of Covington. So thank you. And a round of applause for Terry and Stephanie as well, and I know that Julie will be reaching out to Terry and Stephanie with the awards. And with that, that is our awards tonight. I just want to thank all of our recipients. And thank you for all the hard work and commitment you have for the city of Covington and everybody who not only live here, but who passed through our city. So thank you. With that, we will go into our second public communication item, and that is a proclamation for the American Red Cross. And I believe Justin Vanland Schut is here tonight to receive that. And I believe we also have somebody from the American Red Cross, Daniel Worth, to receive this proclamation. And is Justin here tonight as well?
They're both being moved over. It just takes a moment.
The wonders of Zoom. Thank you, Krista. So I'll read this proclamation. Whereas in eighteen eighty-one, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Today, more than one hundred and forty years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Covington who continue to carry out Clara's lifesaving legacy. And whereas the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food and comfort for families devastated by local disasters like home fires, donating essential blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease, supporting service members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. And whereas their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience, now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, do hereby proclaim the month of March two thousand twenty-two to be Red Cross Month in the city of Covington and strongly urge all citizens to reach out and support its humanitarian mission as we dedicate this month to all of those who continue to advance the noble, noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton. And with that, I want to thank Justin Vanland Schut for bringing this forward. And Daniel, if we were in person, I'd be handing you this proclamation, but we'll make sure and get you a copy of it. And I want to say thank you to the American Red Cross for all that you do. You've personally helped me two years ago, well, about a week, two years ago, when I had a house fire, but I see all the action that the American Red Cross does, so it's greatly appreciated who all the volunteers are, and Daniel, is there anything that you'd like to add?
Thank you so much, Mayor Wagner. We just really appreciate the partnership, and thank you to Justin for your leadership and helping to, to, to bridge this, this opportunity tonight. Mayor Wagner, it'd be great to get you, get your story and hear more about your experience with us. Because we're always looking to hear those personal stories of impact where we have helped people. You heard through the proclamation, a great number of, of our services. I know we have a blood drive coming up shortly in Covington that Justin's helped arrange with, with people on this, on this group. And we also, right now, are really looking for, for volunteers, donors, and opportunities to teach youth through our youth preparedness education in elementary school, K through two or three through five. We've got some great programs there. We're just really grateful for this opportunity and would open up the floor for any questions that the council members or others might have.
Does council have anything? And I also want to make sure and give Justin a chance to speak if he does. I like your hat, Justin, by the way. Jennifer?
Hi, Daniel. I was wondering if you, if you haven't already, if you would provide your contact info to Krista so I could get in touch with you about some of that youth education resources.
Absolutely, I can do that.
Thank you.
Is there any other council members that have a question or comment? Justin, did you have anything you'd like to add?
I'll be brief, but thank you very much, Mayor, council members, and city team members. When that proclamation was being read, I got choked up because Covington, without the pandemic, still would have been close to my heart, but I mean, sitting in the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design today, thinking of what the city's doing to prevent suffering, that aligns directly with what the Red Cross is doing. I can't thank you enough for all the hard work, everything you've done. I mean, in following Joshua and Sarah and Lily, and we've got phenomenal people within our community, and we're, the Red Cross, myself, are proud to be a partner with you. As Dan said, if we can help with any of these other initiatives, I mean, Mayor Wagner, you personally had something that was be helped with. So there are ways we can come in and replace batteries and smoke detectors. We can do education as well, so we'd like to help. And since Dan didn't mention, he's been with Red Cross for eight years, was previously with the Peace Corps, and just recently, he was the recipient of the Red Cross Spirit of the Pacific Award, which entire Pacific, because he exemplifies the spirit of the Red Cross. So he's a friend, fellow Rotarian, and couldn't be prouder to be on this call right now. So thank you all very much.
And thank you. And Daniel, I would love to share my story. I did years of Red Cross training many years ago, but yeah, if you don't mind getting your contact information to Krista, and I can reach out and be happy to sit down and discuss everything and all the action I've seen personally with Red Cross. I appreciate that.
Excellent. I would love that. Thank you so much.
You bet. And with that, I really appreciate you, Daniel, and Justin, thank you for bringing this forward, and I hope you both have a very good evening and keep up the great work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is our third public communication item is an annual report on Lake Point two thousand twenty-one by Oak Point. And I believe that Nancy Rogers is here to give that update tonight. Welcome, Nancy.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Nancy Rogers. I'm a land use attorney with the law firm of Karen Cross and Hempelman, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Oak Point to provide you an annual report about the Lake Point development. Lake Point's development agreement, which you all are very familiar with, having just recently gone through the amendment process with us, has a section, section thirty-six, that calls for an annual report on the development status to be delivered to the city council. However, at this very early stage in the development, there's really only two topics that are relevant. One is the status of reclamation, and the second is the status of road construction. And I have a couple of fun, I think they're fun, aerial shots of the site. If Krista, if you could pull those up for me. Great, thank you. So this shot is an overall view of the Lake Point site. This was taken in January of two thousand twenty-two. And you can see that reclamation is obviously ongoing. The site is continuing to be filled. Grades are, you know, starting to look more like what a development site will be in the future, et cetera. And then the second slide, if we could move over to that one. This is a close-up of the, what will be the Highway eighteen roundabouts. So this is over, and again, the, the report criterion I'm addressing here is the status of road construction. And what this shows is a close-up view that was taken last week of the ongoing work on the overpass roundabout. So there's going to be a roundabout for, at the intersection on either side of that southeast T fifty-six roundabout, and you can see work is being done right now to expand the traffic lanes as part of that roundabout construction project. So that's something I just wanted to highlight in the road construction vein. And then in closing, I wanted to note that within the Lake Point property, it is our plan to have the Covington Connector roadway under construction by the end of this year, two thousand twenty-two. And that is all I have to present to you this evening. So thank you so much.
Nancy, can you take questions if council has any questions? Does council have any questions for Nancy? Beth?
Hi there. Thank you. Thank you, Nancy, for that report. Is there any update on the replanting of any of the trees based on the Arborist recommendation from twenty seventeen? That were supposed to be some trees?
I do not know the answer to that question, but I will.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Beth. Any other questions for Nancy tonight?
I just offer a suggestion, Jeff.
Yes.
For Nancy, if you just want to share that with Selina or Ryan, then we can give that to the council, which have an answer back on Beth's question.
Oh, I see. Great.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see any other questions. Nancy, thank you very much for attending tonight and giving us an update on where Lake Point is, and thank you for doing that and really appreciate seeing all the progress that's happening on two hundred and fourth at the roundabout intersections and at the land reclamation for the Lake Point. So thank you. And please pass that on to everybody at Oak Point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A great evening, Nancy.
Thanks. Good night.
Next up is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. And if you are here to speak towards the hearing, a public hearing that we have about the interim zoning related to permanent supportive housing, that will be coming up as later on in the meeting. So if you want your comments to be heard for that, I will call at that time. So with that, if there are anybody in the audience that would wish to address council for anything that's on the agenda or any other item, this is your first of two comment periods tonight. Please raise your hand. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council tonight? Right, seeing nobody raise their hand, there will be a second opportunity for public comment towards the end of our meeting. Thank you. Next up is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C seven. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of it.
It's been moved by Jennifer and seconded by Christina to approve the consent agenda, items C one through C seven. Call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye as unanimous to approve the consent agenda. Thank you all. Next up is reports of commissions. First up is arts, and I see that Marita Benedict is here tonight. Welcome, Marita. There you are. Good evening, Marita, and welcome.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name is Marita Benedict here with the Arts Commission, and I wanted to start by just saying congratulations to all the award winners this evening, my friend Josh especially, and of course, our Lily. We were so proud of her, and she has been such an exceptional member of our commission for several years. And so we were really pleased and proud that she was an award winner this year. In terms of our report, we have been working on figuring out a maintenance plan In terms of our report, we have been working on figuring out a maintenance plan for the skate park. One of our commissioners actually went out there and talked to some of the people who have been using it. And ironically enough, they say they like it the way it is and don't want it spruced up. But we know that we have a duty to make sure that it's maintained properly. So we are working to get in contact with the artist, our initial efforts. We were not able to, but I think we can maybe reach him on Instagram or something. So we are working to reach out to him and have that conversation. We are also working with Mr. Van Landshut to help him get some art up in city, the city hall hallways. And so we're reaching out to some local artists and then we'll work with him on proper installation techniques. And then we are also working on our twenty twenty two work plan. So this is something that will mirror the work plan that's in place already for parks. So we're kind of using that as a template and creating a document that can help guide the commission in the same vein for arts. And we are also working with Justin, Mr. Van Landshut on that, help seeing if we can get him to wrap the PSE box. Or he would like to wrap the PSE box. So we're helping him with some of the logistics behind the scenes to see how we can get that going. And then he was also more than kind to offer to sponsor us to be a sponsor of the Covington Makers Market, which I'm sure you've heard the chamber is sponsoring. On April twenty, or not sponsoring, they're they're hosting a Makers Market on April twenty third. So Justin was kind enough to offer to sponsor the Arts Commission to be a sponsor of the Makers Market. So we did accept and we're excited to be a part of that. And then we are also, and when I say we, I mean Jenny, our fearless. Performing arts gal or commissioner is busy working on her twenty twenty two program. So for the summer. So it was, you know, so successful last summer. She's working on putting that together again for this year. And then in terms of upcoming topics, I believe that Ethan is going to be joining our Ethan Newton is going to be joining our meeting next week or next month, sorry. And we should be getting some updates on the utility box wrap and the rotating art. Call. So we're excited for that. And I think with that, that's our update.
Council have any questions for Marita? Marita, thank you very much for a very great update and please pass on our thanks to the entire Arts Commission for all the great work they do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our Covington Economic Development Council Volunteer of the Year, Josh Lyons. I'm going to keep using that, Josh. I'm so glad you got it.
Please do. Just if you could get me a sash that I could wear when I'm in City Hall, that would be great.
I'll get you a crown too.
A crown would be awesome indeed. Krista, that was smooth as silk, by the way. That was that was a good transition. I was getting the I was getting the call before Marita was even done. So. We're getting this thing down right about the time we're experts, we'll all get to meet again in person and we'll we'll be able to put this away. But anyway. So CEDIS update for everyone. I'd like to point out that kind of over the last couple of years, these counts, these these committees have been difficult, obviously not being able to meet in person. But one thing I'll say in listening to the early update by Marita and just being a part of the general updates and discussions that have been going on in the city. I feel a tremendous amount of momentum going on despite all these challenges. It feels like we're really making tremendous progress towards a lot of initiatives that I think will make Covington a great place for business and a great place to live. And so again, I just want to say thanks to the leadership of Covington for allowing some of us to do this work and embracing our ideas and embracing our efforts. It it really makes a difference in the desire to continue to contribute. So CEDIS's North Star, really since I've been involved for the last four or five years, has been on the concept of branding to really pick up. Where at one point we may have stopped in developing a new logo and and theme around Covington and whatnot. And so, you know, again, as review, that's resulted in in some out of the box thinking like the introduction of karma. As part of the as part of our the city's fabric and whatnot. We're we've been kind of feeling our way in the dark, trying to figure out which way to go next. And that resulted in us talking about, you may recall, the concept of an X factor for Covington. Project X Factor or what's Covington's secret sauce? And, you know, sometimes the the best solutions are simple. And what's come of some of those discussions is the committee that's being less led by Justin Van Landshut in the Clean Safe Welcome Committee. And I believe that CEDIS is really going to take the welcome part of that and run with it and see what we can do. To really make Covington a truly welcoming place for for people to come and to shop and to live and and to enjoy. And so that's going to be a big topic within our next meeting. We're also going to kind of pick up where we think we can add to some of the some of the initiatives going on in relation to like the SEP TED training that's going on this week that the city is sponsoring. We like to bring specifically, as we know, Covington is a unique business community in some ways, that we have a lot of businesses that are manager driven. And so we were talking about developing a Business Manager Summit to invite those business leaders to a discussion around key topics that we feel need to be discussed. One of the bigger ones is the role and willingness for those larger businesses to invest in theft prevention and prosecution. We had a really interesting discussion in the Clean Safe Welcome Committee around some of the frustrations of some of our businesses not either. Really putting a lot into theft prevention or even willingness to prosecute. So we're going to talk about the responsibility that businesses, we feel businesses have to the community to do so. And then other topics as well around what we're trying to do to make Covington a really viable place to do business. So that's coming up. And then we'll continue to work with the Arts Commission on a couple of initiatives. There's a business art grant out there that we'd like to consult with them on and and really work towards some some cool implementation of that. So that's that's the sum of it.
Thanks, Josh. Does council have any questions for Josh? Well, thank you again for showing up tonight on both counts, Josh, and congratulations again for Volunteer of the Year. And please pass on our thanks to everybody on CEDIS for all the hard work you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great evening.
You too.
Next up is our Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission and Bronwyn. There you are, Bronwyn. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Hope everyone's enjoyed our little snow fest and now it's gone. That's good. So we've actually been really busy on the ECSJ. I'm really excited. Last month, we it was time to vote in a new chair and vice chair, and it was moved that me and Ramal finish a full year term. So they voted to keep us until May. So we'll be chair and vice chair until then. And so I'm excited to be able to kind of continue some stuff that I that, you know, I got to be involved in to start. So we ended up keeping our momentum and we've got some subcommittees. Working on an article for the for the. I guess it's the newsletter for Covington. I can't remember the name of it. I'm sorry. But we're there's going to be an article about us and that has been written. We're going to be approving that this month. There we started our strategic planning subcommittee. So we're actually going to put together all the things that we've been talking about and start moving on them, you know, get our faces out there, get some things done. And ultimately, we want to be able to host some kind of event. So all of that is is coming. We're working on Kevin, our youngest member who we actually got instead of the youth council. So I'm happy about that. I love Kevin. And he started this movement about land acknowledgement. And now with all the research and things, that's something that we are going to be able to put together and hopefully present to you all to take a look at. And something that, you know, we as a city can can do. So I I'm excited in the coming months, we'll be able to do that. And that's where we're really moving the most. You know, of course, getting members, we've lost a couple of more members just due to life. And everything that, you know, people are dealing with the last twenty four months have just been kind of not fun. And so some we've lost a few people. So I'm just going to ask again, you know, people, anybody interested equity? Social justice, cultural diversity, that's what we're about. Let us know because we we do need more members. We're looking for everyone. And so that'll be in the article too. And that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Does council have any questions for Bronwyn? I don't see anybody, but Bronwyn, thank you very much for a great update. Really appreciate all the hard work that you and your team are doing. And please pass on our thanks to everybody on the commission.
No kidding. Yeah. Well, thank you so much and happy Black History Month.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Have a good evening.
You do.
Next is Human Services, Debbie Jacobson. Welcome, Debbie. Are you there, Debbie? You were on mute. There you go.
I'm sorry. I wasn't looking. I wasn't looking at the pictures. I was looking at my document. So the commission met for the first time since pre holidays. We actually haven't hadn't been together for a while. So we started our meeting with a check in to see how everybody was doing and find out if everybody's still engaged and ready to move forward. This is a big year for us because it's a funding year. So that means the application process is going to start up later on. So everybody's doing well, but unfortunately, Vice Chair Dawn Allen has said that she won't be renewing her application for the commission after the April or the March meeting. So that'll leave two positions open on Human Services Commission that we'd like to fill. Dawn's just been an invaluable asset to the commission. She's with the work she does as a career. She's just brought a really caring heart and professional insight to decisions over the years. And she's definitely going to be missed. We're hoping, you know, opportunities ahead of us and we're hoping to add some more diversity to the commission. That's reflective of the work that we're all trying to do and talk about a great deal. And Dawn's hoping we can do that as well. We got updated the Julie and I worked together to update the commission on a program called One Love. And they've they're having some struggles meeting their commitments for their funding. It was bad enough that we finally had to reclaim funds for the time being. But that said, we're not leaving them high and dry. We work very closely. We want to see these programs successful. We that those kinds of decisions are not made lightly and it's usually after they're just, I think, maybe they're at like nine percent of their goals. And it's really, really poor numbers and the approach seemed haphazard and just wasn't a solid program that was happening. And so I spent several hours that's kind of in my wheelhouse to help a program like this and spent several hours with them, listening to the what they do. What their struggles have been with COVID and their approach to how they're handling things and was able to offer them. Quite a few ideas on how they can help get their wheels on the track and move forward. They were incredibly gracious about it and genuine genuinely want to. Improve the numbers and have things look much different here over time. Julie has since backtrack with them and just to check in and so have I and helped them actually facilitate some of those steps. So I know they're actively making doing their part, trying to hit their goals or at least improve them at the very least. We're very understanding of these programs that are struggling as a result of COVID. So that intention is of theirs is heard. Another update that's been a big deal is Ben, Dawn, the Domestic Violence Program. They've struggled ever since I've come on to the commission for years and it's progressively gotten worse. They got a new director. It felt like it was improving. COVID hit and it's just continued to plummet to. A bad, a bad place and they're they're really struggling and they're having a very difficult time justifying why they're struggling and why the numbers are that they are. So Dawn's does very, very important work for our community. It is not taken lightly. The only other place that's even compares would be Maple Vining Place, which is just an extraordinary program that does a lot of similar work. We will be having, continue to work with them, but we'll be having some pretty intensive conversations with a new funding cycle coming up because it's been it's been kind of rough. So to be continued to see where that goes. The city staff have a donation fund and we get the privilege of allocating those funds, donating them to programs in the city. We try to choose programs that are small and really benefit from a little bit can go a long ways for them and they're. And this year we chose the Safe Car Parking Program. And Nexus that provides youth homelessness and behavioral health support services in Auburn and South King County are really fantastic programs, very hands on, really successful. Both of those programs really benefit from gift cards for clothing and food, gas, you know, that money will go a long ways to help support them. So we felt great about that. Each program got approximately $850. And then we updated our work plan for the year. We have a tentative schedule for the year. It's kind of influx till we see how COVID is going to impact our work and our ability to get into the community. But in the meantime, we've selected a speaker for the next meeting. And it's the Congolese Integration Network. It's a it's a program, a smaller nonprofit that we've never funded. It's very unique to other ones that we have funded in the past. And they've claimed some concerns about their ability and that we should be doing more for them stuff. So we've asked them to come and present to us and talk to us about what they're struggling with. This will be important because of the way it was communicated to us and which was not very friendly. And we really want to have an opportunity to hear where their frustration is and what they're going through, especially since we have a new funding cycle coming up. So that's what I have for now. We actually accomplished quite a bit. Are there any questions?
Does council have any questions? Debbie, thank you very much for a very great update. And I know that with the new funding cycle, you're going to be extremely busy, you and your team. So thank you in advance to all of your fellow commission members for all the hard work that you do in helping our community.
I I would like to ask the council also, since you're connected to so many different people and so many different areas, to really think about who might be some good selections for this commission. You know, our style and what our goals are. And if you have somebody that would fit that in our goal, even to add some diversity, which isn't critical, but very important to us as well. We would really appreciate those recommendations.
Perfect. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you so much. Bye bye.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Next is Planning Commission. We had a joint session earlier today, so we do not have an update. And is there anybody from the youth council here tonight? I do not see anybody in the audience from the youth council. So with that, that is concludes our reports of commission. Beth.
I think you forgot Parks and Rec.
Oh, I'm sorry, Parks. Thank you, Beth.
Okay.
Boy, Laura, you can chew me out later for that one. I apologize. Thank you, Beth. Parks and Rec, Laura Morrissey.
Hi there. I know I'm around so much. You like just get used to seeing me. I just kind of hang out, blend into the background. I'm like one with you all here. So thank you, Beth. We actually had a really big meeting last meeting, so I do have quite a bit to report on to you. We had a open house. We had a open house for the Prose Plan, that we have so many things going on, I gotta get them sorted out in my mind. So I don't know if any of you attended the open house. I don't want to be redundant if you did. We didn't have a tremendously large attendance from the public, but the people who did attend were very pleasantly interactive. And one thing that stood out to me as we took comments from the public was how positive they all were. All, almost everybody phrased their comments with, "Thank you for all the work you're doing. I really appreciate all the work you're doing. I really love Covington. I really love the area." You know, something like that, and then asked their question. And that just really stood out to me, the positivity of all of the comments. So that is something that I wanted to bring back to you and let you know that, as you probably get a lot of the negatives, this was some time where we got a lot of positives, and so that was really great. The public comments did include a big plug for trails and interconnectivity, a comment about possibly working together with King County, and then questions just about timeframe. So pretty general questions from the public, but also question, the things that the public said that they wanted are the things that Parks Commission has been pushing for and the things that we've been bringing to city council, and they're probably the same things that you guys want, too. And it's always good to hear that unsolicited from the public because it lets us all know that we're on the right track. We're wanting the right things. We're all moving in the right direction together. There was a request for more aquatics hours and more aquatics availability, and also a request for more basketball courts. So those are some of the general comments that we got from the open house. And then after the open house, I think almost everybody stayed through the actual Parks Commission meeting itself. And there were questions that kind of popped up in the comments that we dealt with as was appropriate for the meeting. The public survey was the most interesting thing to me of everything that was brought forth from the Prose Plan. And with the public survey also came questions about funding. The second survey that was done for the Prose Plan, they asked, "How would you fund these things that you want?" The biggest thing that I saw from the survey was, "Don't touch the property taxes." People were very adamant that they did not want their property taxes adjusted in any way. Now, we didn't offer to adjust them down, so they probably would have been okay with that, but they did not want them any higher. So when it comes to funding, I would recommend not touching the property taxes. There, you will get the survey, you will see it all in the Prose Plan yourself, but that like came through loud and clear. The otherwise, we had the update on SoCo Park, same update that you guys are going to get later in the meeting. A couple, I'll just let you know the feedback from the Parks Commission. We liked their third design, which was the like most popular. I don't, I can't remember the phrasing that they used, but the one that they most preferred. Parks Commission gave feedback on, yes, we really do want to have a bathroom. Yes, it really does need to be near the playground because all parents of young children will hate you if you do not put a bathroom near the playground. Right? And then we also brought up just the idea of walking paths and walkability. And something that I have noticed recently is parents walking and doing laps like around the playground while their kids play so that the parents can get exercise, but still keep their children in visual range and have that security and kind of multitask with their time. So we talked about just making sure that that was kind of built into the design, the option for walkability very close to and around the playground. Also talked about just moving play elements so that they're closer together, again, thinking of parents, thinking of sightlines, thinking of multiple kids. We had an update on the Jenkins Creek Concept Design for the Parking Lot and Entry Structure that is going on the property that we purchased by the roundabout. There were some questions about right of way that was just brought to us as information. So we gave feedback on that as well. That was kind of more of an FYI for the Parks Commission. Last item was the election of Parks and Recreation Commission Officers. And so I will remain on as the chair. And Robert Poole actually is going to step up and try out vice chair for a year, which is great. It's always good to get some fresh blood into the system. So, and that, I think, wraps it up. Next meeting, we are going to be dealing with the plan both for the Parks and Rec Department and the Parks Plan, both for the Parks Commission as well, Treeboard Plan, Commission Work Plan, lots of plans next month. So we did all the fun stuff this month, and we gotta do the paperwork next month. So that, I think, wraps it up. Any questions?
Does counsel have any questions for Laura? Laura, thank you. My apologies again for skipping over Parks. I mean, that is.
Fine. It happens.
No, it shouldn't. I apologize, but thank you for a great report. Congratulations to Robert for being the vice chair. And please pass on our thanks to everybody on the Parks Commission for all the hard work you do and all the paperwork you're going to be doing next month.
Right. Yes, thank you, Jeff. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, Laura. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
All right, let me make sure I didn't miss anybody else. No, and thank you again, Beth. Next up is our public hearing. And tonight, we have a public hearing to receive testimony from the public regarding the ordinance, possible ordinance of adopting and renewing interim zoning regulations related to permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing, and emergency shelters in response to House Bill 1220, adding new sections to Chapter 18.20 of the Covington Municipal Code, amending the Covington Municipal Code 14.30.040, Covington Municipal Code 18.20.1305, Covington Municipal Code 18.25.030, and Covington Municipal Code 18.31.080 for a period of six months. This being the date set and proper notices having been posted and published in accordance with state and local law, the public hearing is hereby declared open. And with that, I believe Ryan, you're giving the staff report for this item. Welcome, Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, Ryan Herrman, Planning Manager, City of Covington. In front of you this evening is an ordinance that renews ordinance number 9-2021, which adopted interim zoning regulations related to permanent housing, permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing, and emergency shelters in response to House Bill 1220. Staff requests the council renew the interim zoning regulations this evening for a period of six months as we wait for the data required from the Department of Commerce to complete this planning effort. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Ryan. The ground rules for this public comment during the public hearing are as follows. When your name is called, please give your name and state whether you're a resident of the City of Covington or not. Please limit your comments to four minutes. The city clerk will set a timer that will go off when your time is up. When the timer goes off, please wind up promptly. And with that, is there anybody in the audience wishing to address counsel during this public hearing? Please raise your hand. Anybody in the audience wishing to address counsel during this public hearing? Seeing nobody raise their hand, I declare this public hearing closed and open it up for counsel if they have any questions for Ryan. Is counsel ready to take action tonight? The motion before us is to possibly approve the proposed ordinance, renewing ordinance number 09-2021, interim zoning regulations related to permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing, and emergency shelters for a period of six months.
So moved.
Second. Been moved by Beth and seconded by Sean to approve this proposed ordinance. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
At this point, it sounds like staff, you know, they still need additional information in order for us to make an informed decision and update our code if as required by law. So it only makes sense to extend it another six months in hopes that we get the information that staff needs to make a recommendation.
Thank you, Beth. Sean, would you like to speak to your second?
No, I agree with council member Porter.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Seeing nobody raised their hand, it's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed ordinance, renewing ordinance number 09-2021, the interim zoning regulations related to permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing, and emergency shelters for a period of six months. I'll call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
I.
Sean, how do you vote?
I.
Christina, how do you vote?
I.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
I.
Joe, how do you vote?
I.
Beth, how do you vote?
I.
I also vote I. It is unanimous to approve the proposed ordinance. Thank you all very much. We'll move into new business, which is item number two, is to approve the city manager merit goals. Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. So before you tonight are six proposed merit goals for 2022. I pulled each of these from the annual summit that we held in January. Of course, the council, if you want to add or amend or edit these, you're welcome to. These are just proposed ones that you can work off of. And typically, what we do with staff each year is adopt three merit goals for each member to work for throughout the year. So that's what you have before you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions or be here as part of the discussion.
Hey, does counsel have any questions for Regan? All right, then what I would suggest, thank you, Regan. What we've done in the past is Regan has six goals seated here, setting here for us. I'll ask each council member to give me their top three. And then the top three votes will move towards being the merit goals for Regan if counsel is agreeable to that, is what we've done previously. So with that, I will go down the list. Does counsel have any questions before I start with that? All right, Jared, which are your top three?
I think my top three would be three, four, five.
Thank you, Jared. Sean?
One, two, and five.
Christina? I think we lost you, Christina. Jennifer?
She, if I could. Sorry. I was just gonna say Christina's been having some internet issues, so she's been like kicked off the meeting like four times. So she might need to try to call in.
Okay.
I'll, I'll text her, let her know.
All right. Thanks, Regan.
All right, so three, four, five.
Thank you, Jennifer. Joe?
Three, four, five.
Thank you, Joe. Beth?
Three, five, and six.
Thank you. Did Christina make it back yet?
It doesn't look like it.
All right, I also vote for three, four, and five. And there's Christina coming back now. Welcome back, Christina.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, guys. I, this is probably my fifth time getting kicked off today. I'm not sure what my internet is doing. I have everybody logged off the Wi-Fi.
Okay.
Are we going through the merit goals?
Yeah, so we're going through the merit goals, and I'm looking for your top three for Regan.
Perfect. Thank you. My top three would be one, three, and five.
Okay, so going through the tally, we have six votes for three, four votes for four, and seven votes for five. So Regan, it looks like your merit goals for this year will be three, four, and five. And counsel Sean, Mayor Protem Smith and I met with Regan. That was yesterday, man, time is just. We did meet with Regan yesterday to discuss his merit goals from last year. And we did bring up that we'll do a mid-year check-in, which Regan is, was all for it as well. So we will come back, Regan will bring this back to us again for giving us a mid-year checkup later on this year on these goals. Regan, do you have any questions for us?
No questions. Just thank you.
Okay, then what we'll do is I'll look for a motion to approve items three, four, and five as the 2022 merit goals for city manager.
So moved.
Okay.
It's been moved by Jared and seconded by Jennifer to approve the 2022 merit goals. Jared, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I think, I think these are a lot of the top concerns that a lot of the citizens have. And I trust Regan will do a great job.
Thank you. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your second?
I'm excited to see these. Honestly, they kind of tie into other ones. So I feel like this is like the natural progression, the next steps, and keeps us focused on, you know, what council feels is important. And I love them in your check-in. I think that will be really helpful for us just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Perfect. Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the 2022 merit goals for the city manager. Call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
I.
Sean, how do you vote?
I.
Christina, how do you vote?
I.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
I.
Joe, how do you vote?
I.
Beth, how do you vote?
I.
I also vote I. It's unanimous to approve the 2022 merit goals. Thank you all, and thank you, Regan, for bringing that forward. Next up is new business item number three, presentation of the preferred master plan concept for SoCo Park. Turn this over to Ethan. Welcome, Ethan.
Good evening, mayor and council. As you know, the city has a state grant for a little over 1.2 million to develop a master plan for SoCo Park and to complete the first phase of improvements for the park. In December of 2021, the city contracted with HBB Landscape Architects to help with this project. And in the past two months, HBB and their team has been busy familiarizing themselves with the site conditions and gathering information, including conducting a public survey and developing design concepts in coordination with staff and the Parks and Recreation Commission. So here tonight for a project update and to present the preferred master plan concepts, we have Merritt and Juliette with HBB Landscape Architects. And I'm going to hand over the presentation to them at this point.
Thank you. So as Ethan mentioned, my name's Juliette Vong with HBB Landscape Architecture. Also with me tonight is Merritt as part of the HBB team. We are going to, see, I'm going to share my screen. And we're going to walk you through a little bit of background, some of our survey results, and the, the feedback we got from both the city and the community that led to the preferred master plan. Show you a little bit of the options that we originally looked at and then kind of end with the master plan and some of our next steps. Ethan, once I start presenting, I have a hard time seeing if hands are raised or if there's anyone who would, has any questions along the way. So if you or Merritt could holler at me. I get a little narrow focused on these presentations, and it's hard to keep track of chats or other sorts of things going on. I am happy to pause if you have questions along the way. Otherwise, we'll just kind of go through this and make sure we have some time remaining for any discussion that you might like to have. So let me share my screen and get us started. Clean up some of my other things here. All right, so welcome to our SoCo Park Master Plan. As I mentioned, this is sort of the agenda we're going to go through. It looks like a lot, but I'm going to cruise through some of this relatively quickly. For anyone who may not be familiar, you can see in the red outline here is SoCo Park. Our site is currently undeveloped. It's located across from the future town center off of Wax Road and adjacent to Jenkins Creek. So you can see in our project site map, and I will note that in our vicinity map, north arrows up, the rest of our site, you're going to see we shifted a little bit just for convenience of what fits on our screen, which does mean when we say north, we mean to the right-hand side of the page and south is to the left, etc. So it's not, it's a little bit awkward, but that'll keep you oriented as we move through the rest of the presentation. It's a series of three parcels, and that combined to the current limits of SoCo Park. It is actually a heavily. It is actually a heavily, I would say, encumbered site. We have Jenkins Creek that runs along the east boundary of the park. The creek itself and its associated wetlands kind of together form one system. There's not really an easily divided line between the two, which is convenient for us in defining our wetland buffer boundary for the wetland and the creek. It also means that that wetland buffer and its associated offset encroaches quite a bit onto the property. It does leave us a small area up at the, what would be the west side of the park next to Wax Road that is more open for development for park improvements. Part of that is also within the limit of the shoreline designation, so you can see the sort of completely open area is fairly narrow with a little bit more flexibility in the shoreline zone and very limited opportunity for programmatic elements within the stream and wetland buffer. I'm going to flip through a handful of photos to show you what it looks like today. Kind of relatively flat, fairly open where the residences were originally constructed, of course, now removed. A number of existing trees, kind of various states of health. We have gone out and done just kind of a preliminary tree analysis. A lot of the cedars that you see out on site are actually in fairly poor health. We have high water tables that's affecting the long-term health of those cedars. The dug firs are certainly much better, and then there's a collection of other trees. We have started seeing, as you can see in here, a number of invasives, blackberries starting to encroach on the site in the open space areas. But there are also a couple of spots of just really beautiful understory of the forest that does remain relatively healthy. And a little bit of peek-a-boo views you can start to see of the wetlands and the creek system itself. We did an extensive site analysis. We did both the topographic survey, evaluated and delineated the wetlands and the stream, the stream edge, designated those shoreline lines and then all the buffer limits associated with it. But we also looked at things like views where, how, kind of what those views and the opportunities to open the park more, so we get good crime prevention and view corridors throughout the site. Looking at the tree canopy, looking at topography, looking at really as much as we can, the opportunities for park recreation use as well as the protection of those natural systems. Our vision and kind of the imagery identity, this is just sort of a collection of words of images that we pulled together based on some of the feedback we heard. I think really a lot of what we find if we sort of distill all the comments so far is that people want a place to gather and play. They really appreciate the natural environment, both within the city as a whole, and that's certainly represented within this park site and want to enhance that ecological value. I think there's a recognition of the importance and the value of having that connection to the future town center with this park property and a little bit of a balance that needs to have an interplay between that urbanness of the town center and the ability to spill events and have opportunities to have various types of community gatherings and events spill into the park, but also recognizing a real natural value of the park itself. So trying to find the balance between those two characters. Snapshot from your pros plan survey that was going concurrent with the very beginning of our park process. And so there are a lot of things that came out of that survey that was very relevant to our process. Some of this, I assume you've probably seen before. And then we did a survey that was specific to SoCo Park where we really asked people within, you know, the pros plan talked about the city as a whole. Now we're asking you for this particular location, this particular park, how important is it to provide the various types of activities? And you can see in bold off to the right-hand side here, walking trails, playgrounds, restrooms, parking, lighting, all really were the top of our list. Open lawn, picnic event, other sorts of things were kind of more to the medium priority. There were strong community comments, lots of interest in splash pads and dog parks, other kinds of sports and court-type facilities, but things that aren't quite as applicable or able to be done on the current park limits due to the funding resources that we had in place with the purchase of the park. Had six hundred and twelve survey responses, which is huge for this community, and like about three hundred and fifty people. So like over half the people took the time to give us specific feedback and comments. So which resulted in a collection of programming opportunities that we looked at. Certainly the things that were high up on the list of priorities, but also things like art gateway, community gardens that were mentioned in the survey, but maybe not necessarily came out as high for important. So we tried to really take a comprehensive look at the opportunities for the site. All right, we've got three concepts I'm going to walk through. I'm not going to go through these in many great detail. I'm going to spend most of my time on the preferred concept. But the basic theory behind concept was, was to really minimize our footprint to really respect and kind of hold true to the boundary of that existing wetland and keep all of our improvements up in the western portion of the site. That definitely limits the amount of space we have available. So along with that line, you know, more nature play, zip line, and more formal play structure, less picnic facilities, some open lawns, smaller plazas, smaller parking, kind of just downsizing a lot of the potential improvements. The second concept expands that a little bit further, opens up a little bit more into the town center, gives a little bit more space for entry and plaza, gateway features, additional picnic shelters, stage amphitheater area, still small, still, and you can see us encroaching a little bit into that buffer, but really trying to still limit the footprint and find a bit more of that balance. And then the third concept really keeps the more formal improvements up in that same area, so we stay outside the wetland buffer. But we bring trails, educational opportunities, overlooks. We extend the things that really are more directly related to the benefit of having the wetland and the stream on the property and use those facilities to push into that buffer area, so it gives us a little bit more space in the more improved portion of the park for amphitheater, picnic, play, gateway features, water sort of art playful features, those kinds of elements that connect more directly to the future town center. This was the concept you heard from the report from the Parks Commission. This was the concept that they generally lean towards. They liked the more, the little bit more generous space. We maximize the play. But we did have porta potty enclosure and some other things that you heard from their comments and feedback. The preferred master plan does follow very much with that third concept. So we have a large generous entry plaza, a significant mid-block crossing that allows the city to close off a portion of Wax Road in the future. Really have a lot of spill over and some continuous opportunities to have events both within the streetscape, town center, and spilling into the park. A lot of this we see sort of trying to take a really light footprint in our early design process. We leave a lot of opportunity to do more detailed design with that future town center concept as it starts to get developed over time. Maximize our play area, and then really we have what that gateway feature is more playful art fountain. Could be something very small, like just little jets that shoot up from the water. It could be something very playful like turtles or something that might kind of give some nod to the wetland environment. But that gives the ability to both have a really visual cue that this is a really unique place and also just really bringing as much of that playfulness into the park character as we can. We keep our ADA paths. We are showing the long-term full build-out of the right-of-way for Rex Road, Wax Road. And then we have a series of little nature nodes and additional trails and overlooks into the wetland. These nature nodes were the ones that the Parks Commission really felt like they wanted to be relocated somewhere closer to the play area. They liked the restroom, but they didn't want a porta potty enclosure. They really wanted this to be a more formal restroom, at least as part of the overall master plan, recognizing there might be more limitations in the early phases of the project. And they really liked the picnic and the ability to kind of open up and use some of this open space. We're also showing future connections to Jenkins Creek Trail, the idea ultimately to connect all the way to Jenkins Park. We've been looking at a series of phase one improvements. So what you're seeing here is the idea of trying to get as much of the trail system in as we can to build out the slider peach area as more open space, kind of informal lawn. And then to build in some of those nature nodes to get a little bit of playfulness immediately. Again, they might not be located here, but the idea is to include some of that playfulness into the immediate improvements. Looking at crosswalk and to make sure the ADA parking onsite gets integrated into an initial phase of improvements. One of the things we did here from the commission, as well as when we asked the community what their interests were for a more immediate phase one improvements, was a fair amount of discussion between open lawn versus trails. We heard from the commission that they'd actually prefer more trails than open lawn. The community was also, I think, leaning a little bit more towards trails versus open lawn. Of course, the dawn side is the trails have some of the mitigation and the permitting associated with them because they do happen into the buffer. But that is something we'd be interested to hear from the council tonight as well. If we have more direction towards trails than open lawn for that initial phase of improvements. And then our overall schedule. We're right here in developing the master plan, and our preferred master plan, we will need to take the preferred elements in the phase one into a SEPA process. And then our goal is very quickly after this meeting, provided we can get some good direction to proceed with a phase one design into construction documents. With the grant limitations, we're trying to get all of the work completed of construction for June two thousand twenty-three. There's a little bit of opportunity and some flexibility, but we really do need to try and continue to push forward with our schedule to meet that grant obligation. With that, I'll just move kind of back to this phase one improvement plan to see if there's any questions or comments.
Council, have any questions? Beth?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So Juliette, a question that I do have about the trails, you mentioned mitigation measures because of the wetland. And permitting, is that the same if it's a soft trail or if it's an ADA concrete trail?
Yeah. I think with our phase one, if we do want to really focus more on the trails than the open lawn space, we would be looking likely at a soft surface trail. So we, the trail that goes along the frontage of the park would be ADA hard surface trail. I think the trail that connects to the ADA parking would also want to be a hard surface. Once you get beyond the parking lot, this trail would likely be a soft surface because it would limit the amount of permitting that we would need to do, and permitting from an environmental standpoint is one of the drivers of our schedule. So we'd be looking at doing everything we can to keep that permitting of the buffer areas and more of an administrative process and not into a larger environmental process.
Would, as a follow-up to that, would we be able to have a paved area to an outlook? So they can still enjoy that? That natural.
Good question.
Without making it maybe the full length of that, that area.
If that's a really strong desire, it would be something we would need to explore.
Okay.
We would, we do need to follow up once we kind of nail down what we ideally want to start as our, our goal for phase one improvements. I should say also, we are looking at considering a series of a couple of additive alternatives so that we have a lot of flexibility in both our budget and our schedule to meet that grant deadline. So it could be something where our initial base bid is a soft surface trail with an additive alternate potentially to a pave a portion of it and do some of that mitigation. So there's a lot of different ways we can start of try to slice and dice this to fit the right parameters and the right goals.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Juliette, thank you very much for your presentation. This is great, pretty exciting. You mentioned there's a phase one. Does that assume there's a phase two? Or is this only, there's just the phase one of this development of this, of this park?
The master plan will certainly identify the additional phases so that the rest of the master plan might come into play. Ethan, I don't know if you want to maybe talk about what some of the potential grant funding opportunities might be for play and how quickly we might be able to get additional phases moving forward.
Yeah, I can speak to that briefly. Part of, part of what's also driving this schedule is some state grant cycles that are coming up. And so that would at least be phase two, and whether we need to break it into more than phase one and two, it's kind of to be determined at this point. We haven't done that part yet.
Okay. And then the other thing I had, I see that there'd be some re-engineering or changing of the traffic patterns on Wax Road there. That could be a while before that, and I'm just wondering, you know, there's the open field across the street currently, and I think that could be in with the play area, could be attractive to some families. I'm wondering what the thoughts are for the interim pedestrian crossing across that road before, you know, we get the, that new construction.
Yeah, we have met with Public Works and talked at length about what we would do in the interim phase along Wax Road, what we could do for parking along the frontage of Wax Road and the potential for using some of that parking across in the future town center. There's a large parking lot there now as well as open field and some covered shelter and play area space. So that is certainly a possibility as well. We did look at the phase one to keep the crossing to connect that larger old-school property to our park closer to the ADA parking. It made sense because this is closer to the multifamily housing. So anyone who's going to be walking to the park is more likely to walk from that direction and want to cross a little sooner. But that doesn't necessarily preclude, we did kind of look at what some temporary crossings closer to the parking lot might be and where those might happen. So I think there's still some outstanding discussions as to what makes the most sense. The idea is if parking, particularly initially, there's just open parking allowed along Wax Road, you know, if there's enough draw to this park that that starts to be problematic, there could be some signage and some additional crossings and improvements to make the parking across the street a little bit more welcoming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Jennifer?
Yes, hi. One of my questions was related to what Sean was just asking. So right now we're looking at having parking along the road for this park.
Informal parking is allowed along the road. We will have ADA paved parking within the project site. So there's a formal entrance and some ADA-only parking that is connected to a paved trail system that goes along the street.
And the parking is part of wax road improvements or part of this park's improvement?
The parking lot within the park boundary would be part of the phase one park improvements. Essentially, the gravel shoulder that's out there now would not be signed to preclude parking. So that's where likely some people would initially park who might be coming here. I think there's a recognition that if that becomes problematic, both from traffic or safety or just the number of people who might want to use this in the interim condition, that some additional considerations for signage or more formalized parking and crosswalk to the property across the street would happen at that time. We were not formalizing any parking or paving any of that parking along Wax Road with phase one.
Okay, and phase one does not include a playground, correct?
It does not currently. It has what we're calling the nature play nodes, which with some of the trees we would need to remove on site, you would basically have like boulders and logs and rocks and just kind of more playful collection of natural elements to balance or walk or jump or, or kind of play around, but not a, what you might consider a more formal or traditional playground.
Yeah, my concern is definitely with parking on a gravel shoulder with small children. My concern is parking across the street in a dilapidated parking lot. I mean, I know.
The best.
Across that very busy road. So I have concerns about that as a person that uses our parks. So I'll put that out there. I agree with the Parks Chair's comments about restrooms. Real restrooms are so much nicer. Once CCP got the real restrooms, that was wonderful. Let me tell you how wonderful that is. The, and I agree with the nature nodes, the sidelines, there is a park not in Covington, but is local that we visit. And I noticed that the big building that has the restrooms and stuff actually blocks your view of the playground as you're driving into the parking. And I always, always think, what a poor design. Because you can't see children that might dart into the parking lot, you know, to meet up with their family or grab a ball. So I did appreciate Laura's comments about that. Trails versus open lawn, I, and this is, you know, not data-based, but I think that trails keep people moving through our parks more so than open lawn. I know open lawn promotes, you know, like large motor skills and, you know, big like soccer and people go out there and play football and everything. But a trail gets people out there with their pets and everything and keeps, keeps people in the park, which I believe would limit people loitering and hanging out that maybe necessarily are using the park in a way that it wasn't designed to be. in a way that it wasn't designed to be used. So I would be a promoter of trails. I know, especially given my experience with some of the property back there, there is you know, a tendency to use some of those green spaces for drug use and whatnot. And I would hate to see that happen to this park. So I think trails would really just keep people going and moving and keeping eyes in there. Again, not database. This is just Jennifer's opinion. And then lastly, this might be a question for Ethan. Are we using? Or is there a focus on this? Septed training? The program in our park design? I mean, I think this is an opportunity to really grab it. As I'm talking about trails and people, keeping people moving through their crime prevention and environmental design, I mean, is that? Or is that being bothered?
Yeah, I can, I can just start off quickly with that, that we have staff trained in Septed. Formally trained, Merritt is one of those. So we always take a very close look and consideration for that. And then Ethan, I'll let you kind of respond to the city's training.
Uh, I would just say that that's what we, we have the paid professionals with the Septed training that are that are definitely engaged on this. And and I think that's been something we've emphasized to them as well as far as making sure that the design lends itself to preventing that kind of crime and that type of activity and keeping things safe. So certainly, certainly a common theme.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Christina?
Yes, thank you. Just to trail off of that. Jennifer, indeed, that information is documented and it is proven in our, you know, Septed classes that more eyes, more people, more presence does in fact keep crime down. I think that's an obvious one. That was one of the first things we learned. But e- even that aside, we live in Washington where open lawns become muddy and they stay muddy for so much of the year. Look at CCP. The the lawns are awesome during the, you know, during July, August, September. We have movie nights, we have, you know, bands in the park and it's it's super fun. But then it's, it's not useless, but it it's difficult to use that kind of space during the other, you know, eight or nine months. So I would strongly encourage, and then if we have a tree canopy over that, you know, it keeps the rain out. Whatnot, I would, I would go walk a trail even in the rain, you know, but but roll around on a lawn that's muddy, huh, not so much. Quick question, I noticed we we are talking about bathrooms, but I maybe I'm missing it. Can you show me where it is in the master plan and where it would go or where they would go right there?
Yeah, so right now, when we looked at this initially, we were thinking more of a porta potty with like a an enclosure. So it's not just sort of sitting out in the open. I think based on some of the the tree studies since, so since this concept was done, we did the tree study. We also kind of looked a little closer at the sightlines and where the best spot for an overlook would be to both be visible from the street, looked at relocating the nature nodes. The restroom does still want to be in this general space because you want close proximity to the parking and the play area. You don't want to block it entirely, but it would likely still go somewhere in this general vicinity.
Okay, thank you. And one last thing, as a mother, I, it just terrifies me to think how close that play place or the playground would be to Wax Road and that and that the street parking. I, it's okay, it's okay if you're across the street, you know, and that's enforced. However, a car that looks pretty close to to this play area would just give me such high anxiety as a mom. I wonder if we could somehow enforce that and then do, I know other cities have some, you know, elevated crossings. So whether it be a bridge, I don't know how much that would cost if that's, you know, through the roof, but maybe it's something we can consider. It's actually kind of fun, you know, to climb a few stairs and walk across a bridge. It's almost like its own little play place. But just something to consider because that, we don't have any bad people in Covington and I know that. But that does concern me.
Okay. Yeah, I think because we are so limited with the buffers, we're we're just limited in space. What we have done in the past is is do more of an ornamental kind of fence that just helps keep kiddos where we're close to that parking. It just gives them a visual cue to sort of say, nope, don't go past the fence. And that has proven pretty helpful. You know, we don't like to fence the whole play area, but doing some of that lower kind of fencing can be really useful. It's about 20 feet away. So it's, it's not, you know, it's, it's, it is, it is kind of close. It's not quite a stone's throw, but it is a hop, skip and a jump, or at least a few. So those sorts of things I think can be happening. I think as the future town center plays out, what that crossing looks like, how that crossing looks, how extensive, you know, we're kind of showing a really generous sort of bulb out of no parking, but whether that wants to extend beyond onto the play area. So we really do limit the on-street parking and get a little extra buffer. That's a possibility we can look at. You know, as you mentioned, you know, over just becomes very expensive. But again, the future town center could have other types of elements that are already elevated or other types of ways to really make this crossing and this connection feel safer. From a master plan standpoint, I do think we could probably pull and maybe remove, you know, an extra parking stall or two just to give a little bit more buffer around that play area. That's certainly a possibility to look at too.
Yeah, just to discourage that. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Beth?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So just a quick question about that crossing now that we were talking about it. I agree with Councilmember Saltis where it would be really great to have an elevated pedestrian crossover, but that is probably down the road if at all. Is that going to be like a lighted crosswalk or something more than just painted strips on the?
Yeah, long term. Yeah, so a long-term as Wax Road has developed, the idea is to have more of that flashing beacon. I think they call it a Hawks, Hawks Crossing, Hawk something. It's the, it's got the flashing kind of rapid beacon on it that would allow like traffic to to stop as the crossing occurs. There's, you know, median to help slow traffic down, kind of a lot of visual cues that there's a crossing. So there's a number of safety elements that at least in some initial discussions with Public Works would be part of that. You know, again, when the future town center starts to play out a little bit more, we're trying to be very flexible with how this entry plaza mid-block crossing would all necessarily play out. At some point, if the park happens a little bit sooner, I think the Hawks Crossing, more flashing beacons, a little more striping, a little bit more of that median could potentially be its own phase. If that becomes something that is a priority in the town center is is a little further down the road than we anticipated.
Okay, and then one final question, I know it might be a little bit too preliminary for this, but one of the things that we're trying to incorporate is more walkability. Not having every single park something that people drive to. I mean, sometimes we will, but I, what I, what I would see happening is with the density going into town center, most of the people coming here are likely going to be coming from the town center and walking to it rather than parking. Or how was, how does, how do we feel this will park will be used? Or who will use it in the next four years, five years? What's the long-term plan for for that?
Yeah, we, that's one of the reasons we we are been talking about who might use it more immediately, why the initial crossing is located in phase one, potentially on this side because you have the multifamily housing really right off this page in this corner here. There's some senior housing down at the other end that is a little bit further of a walk away, but there's, you know, some, there's definitely residential and and a little bit more density that we would hope would be walkable to this with the ADA parking being the primary onsite parking. Long-term, I I see that continuing. I think the future town center obviously will be a big draw. People will come and park in town center and then come across, you know, people who work in the area would maybe come here for lunch or come here for a quick rock walk. As the future Jenkins Creek Trail gets developed, you know, long, long term, I could see a lot of of really sort of oh, ambitious, ambitious walkers kind of walking a nice big loop between the community park and, you know, Jenkins Park. And this, you know, you could have a really amazing loop that would go through there. But I think the the idea is the expectation is it's going to be more parking in the town center long-term and people walking over into the park.
Or or biking, I don't know if that's been a consideration.
Yes, yeah, biking too.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Beth. Does Council have any other questions? Juliet and Merritt, thank you very much. Do you have any questions that you need from us?
Uh, I think the main question was the the trail versus open space for phase one. And I'm I'm hearing pretty loudly that the trail, I think, is is a little bit more preferred versus open lawn space. So I think we'll spend some time studying what we can accomplish and and what some of our limitations on that are. I also heard the restroom, which was something we were, we were kind of got from the the commission as well. Ethan, I think those were really our two big questions we're hoping to get out of this. Is there anything I'm missing?
No, I think, I think that was it. And then certainly we've learned too a lot just from the questions and comments that we've gotten from council. So thank you.
All right. Juliet, Merritt, thank you both very much. And thank you for bringing that presentation to us. That's really exciting to see the the fruition of all the hard work and all the outreach and everything that's gone on. And I'm really excited to see this get kicked off.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You both have a very good evening. Looking forward to seeing it kick, turning dirt to get it started.
That's the goal.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Good night.
Uh, next is new business item number four. Consider awarding the construction contract for S R five sixteen Jenkins Creek to one eighty fifth place southeast. Project C I P one one two seven to the lowest responsible bidder. And Dawn?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to provide some information on this because obviously it's changed a little bit since it was first put on the agenda. Since last week, we did receive bids on the rebid of this project. Again, unfortunately, those bids came in above our available budget. A number of factors we feel in regards to that really kind of a feel an unprecedented continual rise in inflation. We still have material shortage issues that we're experiencing and then even a ongoing current concrete worker strike that have increased the bids on on a number of projects. So with that, those, those bid results, the project came in about fifteen percent higher than the last lowest bid. That does equate to about another $2 million increase. We do feel that the changes that we did make in the contract for rebidding did improve the project and the buildability of that. Because there was a number of things that we noticed even in the previous bid that there were, there were a high probability of some significant change orders in that previous, had we even awarded that to the other bidder. So we felt like those lower of rebidding and reducing that risk and improving that buildability was still a benefit. In fact, the lowest bidder on this second go around of this rebid is actually a very strong contractor. And they were the highest bid in the first round. And they reduced their bid by about $5 million in that. So some significant indicators in that, even though it's, it's frustrating that that was significantly higher. That piece made that funding gap for that project to be about $7 million from our available budget. The city does have about two to three million in traffic impact fees that could go towards bridging that gap. But we still have a significant need of about four to five million to fund, fully fund the project. So, and we had some concern, obviously, that if we don't award this project, you know, we'll lose another fish window, which would be this summer and will delay the contract another year at least. And and then, you know, have more costs again. So, so we did reach out to, to T I B and to Wash Dot to help with a funding gap. And they indicated they couldn't help us. P S R C, it doesn't look like they can either. They haven't fully gotten back to us, but it doesn't look like based on the fact they don't have funding in this project now that they would, they would jump in on it. However, some really good news is we did talk with our lobbyists and they immediately started talking to our representatives, particularly at the house to add $5 million into the transportation package. And we heard on Monday, I believe, that they revised their house package, transportation package to include $5 million in that in their package. And that then obviously the next piece would be negotiating that with the Senate in that regards to to hopefully be able to get that in the, in the package. And that's, you know, huge to to our lobbyists and to particularly, I believe, Representative Intiman and Representative Sullivan for working on that, really even over the weekend to get that hall put in for that. So that was great to to all of them and to the delegation for doing that and and addressing that. And and they'll work to reconcile those differences between the, 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 the Senate and the House and and will continue to work with them to get that get that in there. So, so some of those things I didn't touch on, but I did want to say some of those things that we changed that we feel like helped with the reduction of change orders was we added some information about stream bypass information, which was some significant costs dealing with that stream, the bypass of the stream to be able to build the the project. Definitely some stormwater and utility as well as some de-watering. So there's, there's definitely a number of factors that we had in there that we addressed with that. So I just wanted to kind of bring that that up and and answer any questions that that council might have in regards to that.
Does Council have any questions for Dawn? Jennifer?
Hey, Dawn, this is very, very potentially exciting. When, if approved, when would we actually see construction? I'm really excited about this.
So, so if everything works out, I mean, we should, if there's no extended session and we get, I think by March tenth should be the, by the end of the regular session. So if we, we should know something within the next couple of weeks if there, if it doesn't get extended or anything along those lines. We can, the, also just to kind of, might be a question that people have is the bids are good for forty-five days. So we have until April second, as it sits right now, to award the project. There is some options to extend that if the contractor agrees and we can kind of work with them on that. So, so with all that, the answer to your question, the idea being that, you know, some of that schedule is going to be up to the contractor and we still want to kind of talk with them too as far as, even though we haven't are able to award this now, we are wanting to talk to them about, okay, where are you at as far as gearing up, particularly for this summer and that type of thing? So, so the exact details of that, I don't know yet from the contractor. But obviously the the desire being that we want this going, you know, by summer so we can get some benefits out of getting that fish window for this year. So I would expect, you know, if everything works out, I would say late spring or whatever, we should see some, start seeing some movement and stuff out there with that everything and all my fingers crossed and everything that I can, I can possibly do.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we've been talking about this for years and it is a primary bottleneck in town. And would our residents complain about this all the time? So that's, this is great. I was so disappointed last year, but this is promising. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Beth?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor. So just, and these questions are mostly for the good of, you know, the group that's here and a bit of my information as well. But if we use two, the two to three million dollars from the traffic impact fees, how will that impact other projects in the city?
We've, for the ones that we've already committed for projects, we've kind of already set aside that. That's the reason why we, we have a a bank of uncommitted funds. That's the two to three million that we haven't committed to projects yet. So really, we use that for mostly for match funds for for projects, for grants. And that can only be for capacity related projects. The traffic impact fees can't be for like safety improvements or maintenance improvements or anything along there. So they literally have to be for for more of these types of projects, which are capacity related projects. related projects. So there isn't necessarily anything that I would necessarily say that we would miss out on right now. There's other projects that are coming in that would also add to the to the traffic impact fees going forward. But there's obviously by reducing that bank pretty significantly, basically, you know, potentially to nothing for a for a period of time or very small amount, there is some potential for matching funds that we would have to look at other ways to evaluate. But I think all of those would be things that we could look at, you know, there's significantly less as far as numbers. So you're you're probably talking about matching fees, you know, matching costs of you know, less than a million dollars for, you know, you know, an $8 million project or something like that. So so usually it's, you know, ten, twelve percent somewhere around in there. So that gives you kind of an idea of of what our typical matching would be. But, you know, I think that the fact that we've got such a big funding need or gap that we have right now, that would be the reason probably to utilize those. And then there would be other ways to evaluate if there's grants that come up that we get, then obviously I think we would reevaluate that and bring that to council. It's like, okay, how do we how do we go about this for that and and take that kind of at that time? Do we have other opportunities to still not miss out on any grant funds? Sorry, that's probably a lot more than you asked for.
It's okay. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, like to Jennifer's point, you know, people have been shopping at the bit for this project for over a decade. I mean, we've all are anxious to see it get started. But I guess I was also curious in the comment that you made about whether or not the contractors would be able to start this year. It it was that written into the bid requirement and what if they aren't able to and then we missed the window anyway? When we'd still have that price at least.
Yeah, they they would still have to get going on the project. I mean, we have there's provisions in the contract that once we award and we give them the notice to proceed, they have it's it's can't remember if it's 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 like within like ten days or or something, something along those lines from that period of time where they have to start working on the project or start getting charged. So meaning that their days will start lapsing and everything. And then if they run out of days, then it's liquidated damages. So so it definitely would be something that they would plan to get moving on. No question. It's just a matter of whether we're talking about is that going to be closer to the summer? You know, a lot of that has to do more with the funding than it is to do with. Once we tell them to go, that clock starts. So that will they would get going. Otherwise, it would be there could be some potential cost to them if they don't get the project finished in time.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Beth. Reagan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention, I obviously counsel is put in a tough spot with this one. We've got this amazing project we want to get done. And there's a $7 million shortfall. We've got five million in in the House. We don't know if it's gonna, we don't know if that's going to be improved until March tenth. Right? And so we're in a tough spot tonight. There are some options, though, if count to help you feel more comfortable if you're wanting to move forward tonight or not. But as you know, we've been putting money away in several different reserve funds. We've got a debt service reserve. We've got the park reserve, the town center. If if we were able to take some of the money out of several of those different funds, take the traffic impact fees that Don talked about. And if we're able to get that second ARPA allocation, which is supposed to come this summer, we've not heard anything yet this year about it, but it was, as you recall, a two part allocation, one last year, one this year, then we would be able to cover that shortfall. That's there's a lot of question marks there, but just wanted to put that in the council's mind that we do have some options there. The best 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 path forward is with the legislative allocation that would make this for sure doable. The unfortunate part is we just don't have have it right now. So just want to let counsel know that there is some options for funding.
And if I can mention a little bit too, and and Reagan, you can correct me if I'm wrong too. Our thoughts being that we would could come back to council, you know, quickly. If there is fun, if if, you know, we don't have funding to if we want to go the five million route with the with the legislature in that regards, we could come back. Especially if it's, you know, we know something by March tenth, we could come quickly back to council to get approval and then still be within that timeframe to get that awarded to the contractor. So there are some some options in that regards unless there, as Reagan said, unless there you're wanting to move as far as tonight, awarding that on some some conditions of other funding available.
If we can wait two weeks until our next council meeting, that that will be two days before the legislative session ends. We'll probably have a pretty good idea where that legislative appropriation is or or whether it's not available.
Thank you, Reagan. Joe.
I move that we table this until for two weeks until we know a little bit more from the legislature.
Okay, Jennifer, you had a question?
I I do. I agree with that, but I would like to see the balances on the accounts that we could move money from in a when we're from this. I can't talk. I'm tired.
Well, there's a motion on the floor away. So it's been moved and seconded to table this until our next council meeting. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
When we deal with construction projects, I like to deal in facts and not hopes and wishes because we've done that for ten years. So I believe in two weeks, like Reagan said, we'll have more information. We'll have a pretty good idea. So I think it's just a smart move on our part to if we're going to do this, because this is the start of a project that's gonna basically make our city better and more drivable to get to or reduce traffic congestion. So I want to know all the facts and if we have to wait for the legislature for two weeks, we have to wait for him for two weeks to make an informed decision.
So Sean, would you like to speak to your second?
I I agree with Joe. I think we need more information. I guess I would say in theory that I I support moving forward with this project. And if there is a way we can fund it internally, if the legislature doesn't come through, I'm definitely want to talk about that next week, but hopefully the legislature will find the money for us and we won't have to do that.
Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? The motion before us is to table this agenda item of considering awarding construction contract to our March eighth council meeting. Beth.
I would I would agree that we could wait for two weeks. I'm of the mindset that we need to figure out a way to fund it regardless. But if we don't have to make a decision tonight and we can give ourselves a few more weeks to gauge so that we can do better planning, I think I would be in support of of waiting until the next meeting.
Thank you, Beth. I have a question. I just want to make sure that by waiting two weeks, this is not going to create a constraint for us to move forward with this much needed and much anticipated awaited project.
I'd say it doesn't constrain us, but it obviously it just puts it off two more weeks from giving notice.
And and we'll we'll be talking with the contractor and still be moving in the direction that we will be awarding this project. So we'll be having those conversations with the contractor during this time. But it's just a matter of, you know, based on that, knowing that I don't see that being the factor as far as you know, other than like we said, it's two weeks. Yes, but I don't think it's it's crucial in that regards. I think it's beneficial to get a little bit more information and know what we're dealing with, especially if the potential that $5 million from the legislature.
Okay, I'm comfortable with tabling this until the March eighth council meeting, knowing that it's just to fill figure out exactly where the funding is coming from. And knowing that at March eighth, we'll have other options to fund this project to move forward with it. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so the motion before us is to table this item of awarding the construction contract for SR five sixteen known as CIP one one two seven till our March eighth council meeting. I'll call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
I.
Sean, how do you vote?
I.
Christina, how do you vote?
Hi.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Hi.
Joe, how do you vote?
I.
Beth, how do you vote?
I.
I vote I. So it's unanimous to table it till the March eighth and we have more information. Do you need anything else from us tonight on this dawn?
No, that's every that's good. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up is new business item number five to discuss the Republic Services disruption of service. Being an employee of Republic Services, I will leave the meeting and turn this over to Mayor Pro Tem Smith and just please let me know when you want me to come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, I think he's off now. So am I who am I turning it over to you again, Reagan or to Dawn?
Dawn.
Okay, Dawn.
Um, so we met with Republic Services today again in regards to this and they did give us the news that they will not be giving credits to cities that don't have credits in their contracts. So they did say that that is the the stance that they are going in that direction. There's only a couple of cities, it sounds like, that does have credits and that is some Mamish and Renton. But other than that, they said that they are not providing those credits because it's not in the contract. So that's the news that we got today in that regards. There were some other things that we talked about improving by basically going to more of a block routing of the pickup, which means that they would improve pretty much like through all of their so like with Kent, even unincorporated that's around us in Covington, they would be setting this up as more as block where the focus would be all in that block. And then if if some employee like some hauler was like sick or couldn't go that day or one part of it, then the other ones could pick up a lot easier because they're in that route in that block, I should say. So instead of having, you know, a a area over here and then an area and unincorporated its way over here and so they're kind of working on doing a better block routing, which they want to do that towards August and September. I think that will have a big benefit in in regards to that because you know, that that would say even in the area outside of Covington with unincorporated and us, you know, if you build a block around that, you know, whatever that size is based on the number, they would focus on that area and then another day would be another block and and so on and so on, so forth. So so anyway, that was some of the news they gave us in regards to to that. But the biggest thing obviously being the the credits that we talked about. And then there wasn't any other additional information as far as some of the things we talked about last time that we gave a an update on and that was, you know, some of the improved customer service, that type of thing. We didn't touch on any more of that. The only piece was a little bit of some of the challenges when they send out robo calls is that that information can be coming from like an Arizona number and then a lot of people won't like respond because or pick up because of that. So that's a little bit of their things of working with trying to find better ways to get that information out. And we talked a little bit about that Republic Services app in regards to that too, and and trying to improve on that. So so that's kind of the the information that I have as far as the latest. I think that the pieces to keep in mind is we still need to determine what we're going to do by the end of March is when we have to give notice to Republic if we're going to extend. And as we've said, you know, based on some information that we've heard is that, you know, really a two years is kind of what you need to do if you want to go out to an RFP with another you know, to get bids again for for that to be competitive in that regard. So so that would be kind of where we're at in that regards. There was some discussions as far as if if we extended the contract would and would cut would Republic be willing to make some modifications to say that to your window? And their viewpoint of that is that it would be, you would basically be extending the contract as is for two years. Or if we wanted to change provisions to that, that would kind of open up the negotiations of that. So they may have some things that they would want to bring forth like changing the cost of living indicators to have kind of a blended consumer price index type thing to reflect better of what some of the costs are. So so those are some of the things that we'd have to look at if if we do talk about negotiations, there could be some other costs associated that if we did that. So so anyway, that's kind of all the different factors. I'm willing to answer any questions or if I've confused anyone or anything along those lines, please, please feel free to to ask.
All right. Thank you, Dawn. Christina.
Yeah, I'm remembering where we landed last time. Outside of staff time, will it cost us anything to investigate potential other opportunities?
Is that meaning like in as far as
other
like getting another person like over the next two years or in like the next few months?
I just just getting that information. Then I'm not saying in the next two months. Let's just say in the next two years. Does it cost us anything to to get that information like estimate?
I would, we can, we can get a, one of the things that we would do is we would want some help in from a consultant to help us with negotiating a new contract and that type of thing because it is a pretty big undertaking. So so there is a expert out there that we've used in the past that had retired and it looks like he has kind of come back and had somebody he's working with. So I think that that would be an area that we would want to secure their services and we would get a scope and fee of what that would cost and would bring that back to council. So there would be a a cost associated to renegotiating a contract. You know, with an RFP and all that regardless, over the next, say, two years.
Yeah, well, if anybody else is interested, I would be interested in seeing what that cost would be and if it's not astronomical. I I don't think we have too many options at this point. And like I said last time, Republic has been with us for a long time. This hasn't happened in the past, not at this level. I don't see a reason why we shouldn't extend the two year contract with the with going out and investigating our other options. It sounds it's a bit funny to me that, you know, a response like it's not in our contract could even be uttered by someone who I don't think it would be in their contract not to pick up our garbage either. So that seems a little bit silly to me. But I mean, it's not in the contract. All right. I I have to I have to say this, that I hope we don't start getting another flood of complaints from residents that their bill went up because apparently there's new taxes or something, something. My bill did go up in January, which is just super ironic, the timing and everything. But I I do hope that Republic responds nobly and is reasonable. I just don't understand how that's not in our contract could even be an answer.
Yeah, if I could address a couple of things on there, just it reminded me of a couple of things which are good points. One is to keep in mind that some of the other cities that have gone out to contracts uh, one is to keep in mind that uh some of the other cities that have gone out to contracts um uh is those cities, those those costs have went up twenty, anywhere from twenty to fifty percent uh with new contracts. So it's not necessarily like the 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 costs are going to get necessarily cheaper. I mean, I don't, I don't know for sure, but I'm just kind of telling based on historically, some of the things that we've seen um that it 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 may not be cheaper to go out for an RFP. Um, we do have, I agree with you, the timing of it was um just bad in the regards uh to the increase. That is tied every year to a a CPI and that was uh uh put in there at the beginning of the year, but like you said, it's like right after all of this and then you see a uh a uh bill increase. Uh, I agree. I I think the the timing of that is uh uh was just bad in that regards, which I think contributes to the frustration.
Sure. Well, leading with my head, not my emotions. I still think it's the right thing to do to renew the contract. Thank you.
Uh, council member Porter.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So can we just revisit that one little piece of information that you mentioned about potentially renegotiating the contract that we have with Republic or asking them to add a clause about giving credits? I know you said that could open up the can of worms for other changes, but in in my head I into what council members sold us said, this doesn't happen very often. What happened this last year is not a necessarily normal occurrence. If it doesn't never happens again, it's not going to cost Republic any more money to put that credit clause in. If they're, you know, obviously for snow and things like that, we already know that there are certain uh unforeseen and uncontrollable events that happen. So is there a way to again ask that? And if they want to renew and then they said they were going to renegotiate potentially? What happens if we don't like their new terms? Can we still extend the current one or are we pretty much saying we're we're closing the door on that one and they will force us into something else for the remainder of the term?
So I I think the options that we have and if um if Mark needs to jump in here, he can, but I think the options that we really have is that we would tell, we would tell Republic that we're going to um extend the contract for for two years. We could also begin negotiating with them the contract and want to add uh provisions to that or change, knowing that if they do that, you could have have a contract that supersedes the the two-year extension. In other words, you could, you could say, we're gonna, we're going to uh extend the contract for two years. Um, we can either decide, we'll start talking to you about negotiating some of these pieces and adding into it and seeing what that cost would result, you know, what are they going to negotiate? Are those things favorable? Are we, do we like that? Are we going to accept that? Uh, we can say, yes, we would have to talk with them. Okay, what does that mean for this contract? Um, could that just be you know, two years or do we look at it differently at that point? Is that a longer period of time? Or if we don't feel they're favorable, we just say, okay, we're done and we start um, we start going with the RFP. Um, and then we can still go through that process before that two-year uh period is over. Uh, so I think, I think the pieces being that you can, you can tell them you're going to extend for that two years. Uh, and we can just start aside in the next few months as we're talking with them if there's um um benefits of, you know, opening that contract, so to speak, and what what ramifications or benefits uh it would be to do that. Does that, does that make sense? We could have the kind of parallel going.
I think so, at you kind of gauging them on what their appetite might be for making a minor revision versus what that would look like. I mean, I think you're right. At least if we stick with the one that we have now, we know what the cost will be and maybe there's different mitigation measures for folks that go through what they just went through.
And I, and I did specifically, I did specifically ask that I said if we, if we put in credits over this next two-year period, what would, you know, that be something that they would be amenable to and and basically Republic would look at that and say that they would want some sort of uh revisions, particularly that change in the CPI index, whether that would be a flat three to four percent um annual or whether it be kind of tied to uh uh I think it was like um uh natural gas prices, um union uh worker type and and another CPI. It's like a blended CPI. It's similar to what Kent has in their contract, which which Republic says is a little bit better reflection of what uh their costs are from year to year. So that's what they would be looking for. It's something that they've been wanting to do for years. Uh, so that's the reason why I think they're wanting to have that in and if there's any kind of changes. And so so to say that that's where I, that's where I'm hearing things are right now, even with the change, like you've said, that it that it hasn't happened in the past very much. I think it's happened three times in the last ten years. So um the likelihood of it may be small, but they still may be asking for that as being a condition of that. So.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Others? Um. We have to make a decision by what? The last week of March?
The end, yeah, the end of March, we need to uh notify them by then whether we're going to uh
Right.
For that two-year extension.
Okay. Uh, what do you need from us or what uh between now and then? Um?
What do you need? I guess, I guess I'm wondering if there, based on what we've heard now, especially with the credits and that type of thing. Um uh to me, I'm wondering, are we thinking that, okay, especially since are we leaning towards kind of going through the RFP process? Is that, is that kind of where council is in that regards? Um, if that's the case, then maybe we go go ahead and say, we'll extend the two years. And um we go towards the uh immediately start going out to an RFP, finding out what that consultant cost would be for that and start moving in that direction. Um we can also, even with that, we could still have some conversations if we want to, you know, talk about renegotiating with it as well. But I think really the piece is do we think there's going to be anything different uh short of of talking with them about the two-year extension? We can start dealing with the RFP and if we want to renegotiate with Republic, then you can do whatever we want to at that point. It's like a new contract. You could, it could be for whatever period of that you want. Well, I'm sure there's a limit to that, but uh I would defer that to Mark, but um but those pieces would be something that we could put in that if that's something we want to negotiate. Uh but otherwise we move towards an RFP, I guess, is what I'm asking. The biggest thing being that giving them notice that we're going to extend it for two years and then uh we can make those decisions. But that's, that's the piece that the biggest critical piece is we do that.
Jennifer.
Um, could, well, I think it would be who of us to um ha, sorry, again, I'm so tired today. I don't know what the deal is. I've been sitting in this chair a really long time, having a really hard time talking. Um to request some check-ins like, okay, we're kind of in a corner. We need to to just continue and renew the contract for two years. Uh, whether or not we decide to do an RFP, that's a council decision. But whether or not we decide to do that or not, this is what we need you to do. We need to ensure that you're improving your routes. We need to ensure that you're improving client communication and have them come just give us a presentation every six months, once a year, so we can see a client-centered approach to our issues. When I am hearing these reports from staff, I'm not, you know, like again, my day job, I deal with customers a lot. I'm not hearing what I tell my team to tell customers and clients. We always want our customers taken care of and I I mean, maybe you're getting it and just not rel- relaying it, which I'm not accusing you of, Don, but I I think some check-ins so that council is 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 feeling that or hearing it so that we're convinced that there's improvements being made to better serve the residents. Um I I think if we could do that, that would be really helpful for future decision-making.
Yeah, I don't see any issue with that. It's definitely something I can talk with them about. Um, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't see anything, uh, any issues with that. They are going through a little bit of a change of getting a new general manager um on board. Uh, they're expecting that to be in the coming weeks. Uh, so there is a little bit of change and stuff along those lines. So um I think that would be also good with with expressing, you know, council's concerns and and it'd be good for for this person or someone from uh Republic to to maybe give some update and and uh give some face time for that matter. So I I think that's, I think that's a good idea. I can definitely talk with them about that.
Mark? Or uh sorry, Jennifer, were you done? Mark?
Just very briefly, um, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Smith. Uh, what, as we're going through this process of the council evaluating what its options are, renewing for two years means every other option remains on the table for the city. And so even if the city went out and did an entire RFP process and we didn't like the results, we didn't like what the proposals were, we still have it our sole option to continue with Republic for another two, after that under the current contract. So I think with the renewal, staff has a lot of ability to explore everything that we've discussed here over the past couple of weeks and the past couple of months about RFPs, contract provisions, because every time you negotiate a contract provision, as Don pointed out, that comes with certain, that may come with certain costs. So it's not just us getting something. It would be a give and take between the city and Republic. And if none of that came through for us and we weren't, weren't happy with terms, stick with the current contract and do go through the RFP process, make determinations based upon that, what we want to do. And then at the end of the two, next two-year period or whenever the extension is from that, make a determination of whether, how the city council wants to proceed. But your options are very uh you you myriad options right now to deal with this moving forward. But I just wanted to say that really briefly and make sure you knew that there was an option for a second, second year renewal at the end of all this that is totally at uh at your discretion as council.
Uh, that's good to, that's good to know. So um uh, I'm just gonna pipe in here for a second. I I think our strongest position is what Mark just mentioned. I think we, you know, given that if we um alert Republic that we're going to cancel the contract, we're going to be without waste service for two years. I mean, it did tell how long it would be to before we could get a contract signed. So that, you know, uh uh our our residents don't want us to do that. So we're going, I think we're going to extend, but I think what you're also hearing from the council, Dawn, is that we do want to um start the RFP process and see what our options are. Uh, and puts us in the best, I think, negotiating position with uh Republic going forward. If we're actually saying, look, we're, we're considering going out and opening this contract. And if uh as Mark says, we you know, go out and we don't find anything that's better, we can stay with the same deal we've got. Um, so uh unless I'm misreading everyone, I think that's what we're, we're looking at. Uh, Beth?
Yeah, just to clarify, we we can go with an up to two-year extension and then at the end of that period up to another two years. So theoretically, we could do eighteen months and then
Oh, we can do it, yeah.
Eighteen, or whatever, eighteen months and the two years, if we don't find anything, if we're not making headway. Right?
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
It, that's absolutely correct. Uh, for this scenario right now, from what Dawn has spoken with preliminarily with the consultant about, we really need the full two-year extension at this point, but then the second uh extension that's at council's option could be anytime up to two years, but does not necessarily have to be two years. So could be six months, one year or or up to eighteen months or all the way up to two years.
Okay, so the first one does have to be two years and then after that, it could be up to.
So it doesn't have to be two years, but that is recommending that we do the two years because that's the amount of time it will take for us to go through the full RFP process. It's an incredibly time-intensive operation to do that.
All right, I don't want to cut this off. Um, but I guess we'll bring this back at our next council meeting and then do we, we need to put, make a formal decision at that point, Regan? So we do?
When, when the council's ready for that, yeah, if not tonight or whatever.
So, so we could just, um, well, I don't know how are people feeling? Do we want to have a motion? Tonight? Do you want to have one more? Uh?
Can we wait? Just?
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
So, Don, are you clear on specifics to bring back for council next meeting? Yeah, I think that that what we're looking for in the next piece is what I would be is, it sounds like just some, some time for council is, is really, are we good with it's doing the two-year extension? Can, do we give, I think really what it is, is do we give council or give uh Republic Services that two-year extension? And then as Mark said, it leaves all those o- uh options open as far as what, what we can do. Uh
Yeah, Mark.
So if it'd be helpful for council at the next meeting, we can prepare the blue sheet with a variety of options and motions, what staff recommends. And then council will be able to make a decision and have a true action item ready to go. And then we can, then you'll be able to give staff direction and we'll be able to move forward upon what council decides and takes action on.
Yeah, that, that's, that's perfect. So, yeah, please give, bring some options for us at our next meeting. Okay.
Great.
Uh, any other comments or questions? I don't see any hands up.
I just
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Regan.
Uh, you want me to text you?
Yeah, yeah, just tell them we're done.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much. I'm sure that was a lively discussion. Um, I guess that brings us to future agenda items. Does council have anything they'd like to see to future agenda? We already discussed moving the CIP eleven twenty-seven to March eighth. Is there anything else council has? All right, seeing none, let's move into council staff comments. Um, we'll start with Adam.
Okay, I think I got this on. Um, so we had one of our deputies recognized by the county for um excellent service in the who killed Greg uh incident. So Deputy Jeremy Davy uh tracked down some two hundred and some odd leads during that case and was rewarded uh a commander's award, which is the fifth highest award that the sheriff's office gives. So I just want to give kudos to him. I think he did a great job on that case.
Outstanding. Thank you. I'm sure council would like to pass on thanks from us all as well. So if you could please pass that on, we'd appreciate it.
Will do.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Thanks, Adam. Appreciate it. Ethan?
Uh, no more comments from me tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. Don?
Uh, just real quick, um, I think um we've shared some information with council already, uh but uh on two hundred and fourth, they really are trying to wrap up that project here uh and get that signal up and operational uh within the next week or so. Uh, so we're still uh working with them on that regard. So exciting that that, that project is getting, getting close. Again, there's still the the aspect of five sixteen, the actual grinding and paving of that between um uh along five sixteen there uh is still going to be later on just because of weather and washout requirements, but uh other than that, the project uh is getting very close to being wrapped up. So um excited about that and and Lake Point already or Oak Point talked about earlier uh about the uh work that the contractor is doing at the interchanges and they're definitely uh going on that. So uh good progress on those uh projects and excited uh that uh the two hundred and fourth is is definitely in its final phases.
That's awesome. Thank you, Don. Uh, Selena.
Sorry, uh, nothing for me other than just thank you for your time this morning at the joint session. That was a really great, great meeting and I appreciate your time meeting with the planning commission.
Thank you, Selena. It's always a pleasure meeting with the planning commission. Actually, Thank you, Selena. It's always a pleasure meeting with the planning commission, actually with any of our commissions, but thank you. Um, is Casey on tonight?
She's not here, man.
Okay, thank you. Regan?
Uh, nothing more for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Regan. Mark?
There's no executive session tonight and I have nothing further. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Krista?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Krista. I'm going to go into, uh, council comments, but I'm going to mix it up tonight. So I'm going to start with Christina.
Did I draw the lucky straw? Um, no, just thank you for an awesome, I think it was incredibly productive. Um, I'm excited for three more days of September. Have a wonderful week, everyone.
Thanks, Christina. Joe?
Uh, so during the comments here, my dog has crawled up into my lap and I feel like I have a child in my lap again, but weighs much more. Um, last week we, I had skip, we voted to make Maple Valley a member. Uh, Mayor, uh, Sean Kelly is the member from Maple Valley to skip now. Um, we did make, I did make the joke that there was nothing in the contract with Maple Valley that said they're paying for everybody this year. Uh, everyone liked that, but they, but Maple Valley didn't, of course. Um, but I did have Krista forward everybody the agenda from last week's skip meeting. Get the official title of what it is that I'm trying to tell you all to look at, to get me, get back to me at our next meeting. Um, the federal legislative priorities, which is a new business item B, if you could all look that over and give me your, um, your opinions on it. So I can make an informed, so we can have an informed decision and an informed vote at our next skip meeting. Uh, that would be great. Other than that, I hope you all are having fun and enjoying, uh, mid-winter break with the snow. And, uh, talk, looking forward to see you all later.
Thanks, Joe. Mark?
Very sorry to jump in and council member Sumo, uh, I would recommend that council members contact Regan with their opinions on these and I have everyone not reach out to you to make sure we don't
I meant to reach out to me at our next meeting.
Oh, perfect. Wanted to make sure. I, I missed that part and wanted to be positive. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Anything else, Joe? Okay, thank you, Joe. Uh, Sean?
Um, I'll, I'll say, I know it's been a long night. Uh, I was very impressed with our volunteer, um, uh, award winners. Uh, you know, it's, it's great that we have people that are willing to spend their time to help support this city and, and the least we can do is, is to recognize them. And I guess I would extend that also to our, uh, everyone on the commissions that, um, uh, reported today and then our meeting with planning commission. I mean, it's, 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 it's amazing how many people give of their time freely just to give back to our community. So, I don't know. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thanks, Sean. Beth?
Uh, it was a great meeting. Love to hear from the commissions as ever and, um, thankful for all of our volunteers and support of our city.
Thanks, Beth. Jennifer?
Last but not least, does that shut us up now? Um, um, I just wanted to say I really appreciate staff as always. I appreciate council. Um, the news of Fran, um, really was difficult. You know, the last time we met together, she was with us and to know that, you know, she's not here anymore is, it's, it's an interesting feeling. Um, I really, I really enjoyed Fran and, um, especially when you sit next to someone at the dais, you get to know them in, in just a different way than the others that sit across. And so I had the opportunity when I was, um, initially on council to, to, to sit next to Fran for a while. And, um, yeah, she, she was a great woman and really an example of service to, to the core. Her entire life was dedicated to service, to her country, to her community. And, um, yeah, I learned a lot from my short period of getting to know her. So thank you to all of you for making an impact on our community, but as, you know, and to me, it's an individual. I appreciate all of you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Jared?
Jennifer just had it made it that much harder. Um, I, I originally met Fran, uh, years ago at Madigan when I was active duty. Um, and I got injured. Um, so that's where I first met her and then again, at a Timberland HOA meeting where she went along with Margaret, convinced me to run for city council. And, uh, got to know Larry pretty well and, and just, just a great family in general. I first got involved on CEDIS and then, uh, eventually co-chaired. And then, uh, that led to me wanting to do more and that's, that's what helped me decide to, um, run for city council. And with that had very fortunate experiences, um, being able to go down to Olympia, which is, was extremely fun. And, uh, I must've missed that field trip during elementary school or something. But it was really fun, really cool experience. Um, and then being able to testify for, uh, transportation funds on behalf of the city and, uh, being elected the youngest, uh, city council member in King County and definitely heard a lot about it when I was down there and they're like, oh, we've, we've, we have problems that are older than you. And so, which is, I don't know if that's a good thing or not, but always thought that was kind of funny, but in, in return of that, I've always still felt heard and respected and, um, just had a very, very positive experience, especially with city staff. Which makes it hard. Effective, uh, April 12th will be my last meeting. So I just want to say thank you.
Jared, um, thank you for that. Um, I just want to say that you have been a, um, I've been, I've enjoyed you being on council and stuff. I know that you'll be with us for at least another month. Um, as council, I'm sorry to hear that you are, uh, resigning. Um, but I know that you've got other things to do and take care of your family and family comes first. And I've always admired that about you with, uh, you and Christie and your two girls. So, um, I know there's more to come. You're not, we're not hearing the last of you and um, I look forward to continuing to work with you, whether you're on council or not. So, um, but we'll bring this, we will talk more, um, at our next couple of council mem, uh, council meetings. Um, it's, it's sad to hear you have to do that, but it's understandable. Um, also with the passing of Fran, um, she made a big impact on me as well. Um, she's, even though she had moved away, she still had a big impact and, um, I will miss her as I know all of us will. Um, I do have one other item of business though, that I wanted to bring up. Um, we have a, um, Regan and I met with through the Covington Water District as he sent out a note to everybody about, uh, the fish passage at the Howard Hansen Dam and wanting to make sure that we get the future water supply. And we have a letter that we would like to submit, uh, with, uh, council's approval of me signing it to, um, the House Word of Request by partners. And I would sign this on behalf of the City of Covington. Um, I forget, Regan, did we send, share this letter with council?
Yes, I sent it out.
Okay. So, um, can I get council consensus that I can sign this, um, on behalf of City of Covington? All right. We have consensus. So, um, Krista will be happy to sign that and send it off to our, um, Congresswomen and our, um, senators and whoever else, uh, we need to through the Covington Water District, uh, Regan knows who we all need to send it to and Tom Cowan with, uh, Covington Water District. Thank you all for that. We had some very good conversations with our, uh, congresspeople and, um, senators. And, uh, enjoyable talking, especially with Senator Patty Murray, since my mom met her when she first started running for, as a senator, so in her tennis shoes, literally running. Uh, with that, I don't have anything else to add. Um, this brings us to our second public comment period. Uh, it's, speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. With that, is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Seeing nobody raise their hand, uh, this council meeting is adjourned at nine 41 PM. Thank you all very much. And I hope you all have a very good evening. Thank you for a very long night. I appreciate each of you. Thank you. Good night.